Okay. The presentation is now recorded. It's the first town hall meeting on CARES Act and what does it mean for you and your business? So let's go over the mid and greedy stuff for the individual. So individuals, all of the individuals that make seventy-five thousand dollars or less as an adjusted gross income. If you're single, one hundred and twelve thousand dollars or less as a head of household filing status, or one hundred and fifty thousand married filing jointly status, and that's adjusted gross income, will receive a rebate or now, the rebate itself, it is a rebate. It's individual tax credit or rebate means that it's not a tax, it's not going to be taxed to you or your family in two, in 2020. It's a taxable rebate or a credit that's paid in advance. The phase out limitations are one hundred and ninety thousand dollars adjusted gross income for married filing, married filing jointly individuals and ninety five thousand for single individuals. You will get twelve hundred dollars if you're single, twenty-four hundred dollars if you're married, and five hundred dollars for every child that is under the age of seventeen and is claimed as a dependent on your tax return. So that's the easy part. A lot of folks will get it. They do anticipate starting to send out the first batch on April sixth. The first batch will be going into low income individuals, then they'll move up the ladder. And I anticipate anyone that's making close to one fifty AGI married filing jointly will get their refund sometime at the end of April. So that's first. The second thing is the unemployment insurance provisions, which actually I've been bombarded with calls. I know one out, one out of every three households in the United States have somebody that has been recently laid off or the hours were cut significantly because of what's happening. The, the social distancing, the businesses are getting closed left and right. So this is something really concerning to a lot of folks, so I wanted to address it in detail. Once again, I will repeat myself, but I will not cover everything that's outlined in CARES Act. There's over eight hundred pages long. I will only concentrate on things that actually matter to you. And you, meaning everyone who's here and majority of the population. So the unemployment insurance provisions, whoever's eligible for state unemployment and folks will be eligible, the waiting period of seven days has been waived. Anyone who lost their job or suffered significant reduction of income and is making less than five hundred and four dollars per week gross wages in New York State is eligible to apply. Here is the problem. New York State Unemployment Agency is overwhelmed. They're understaffed and they're operating in a very limited capacity. As a result, the only application can be completed online without any issues, but most of the applications cannot, most of the applications cannot be completed in full unless you speak to a live operator. So what does that mean? They receive your application online. You can't get through on the phones because they're either busy or they are just, you know, you go through the prompts and then you get disconnected, the courtesy disconnects. And as a result, people do not complete their applications. What New York State Employment is saying is that because of overwhelming response and applicant, applicants online and on over the phone in terms of the unemployment applications, they are saying that they will process all the unemployment paychecks as soon as they get to them. But it will begin to be, the payments will be retroactive as of the date of your online application or over the phone application. So you will get it eventually. Nobody knows when. I, you need to be patient, you need to be persistent and keep calling until you get to somebody. It could take a week or two or three. Nobody really knows. The last thing you want to do is stress over this. New York State did confirm that you will still get everything paid back to you once you complete the entire application, and it could take a while. You have to be patient. It could take a while. Now, in addition to the state unemployment as a part of the CARES Act, you are automatically eligible for additional six hundred dollars per week in unemployment from the federal government. Now, that will cover you for additional thirteen weeks of payments in the amount of six hundred dollars, no matter what your state unemployment is. And this is a part of the CARES Act. Once again, so you'll get your whatever unemployment you're getting from New York State or any other state. And then the feds will, will, will essentially give you additional six hundred dollars per week for the another thirteen weeks. So you could be sitting home and earning pretty much what the average American is earning over a thousand dollars a week. And that was the whole intent of, of the whole package as a part of the CARES Act. Fluctuated the unemployment. Now, the other big thing is that small business owners and self-employed individuals, if you're a sole proprietor, if you're an S corporation owner and you were on W two and now you're closed, you could be eligible to receive and claim New York State unemployment. I repeat, you could be eligible for the unemployment. It will be based on the payroll that you have paid yourself if you're an S corp or C corp or your net income profit that you actually paid yourself from your other business activities. If you're a self-employed sole proprietor. So please apply and most likely you will get it. Okay. Now, one thing that I have to warn you about, if you have opted out from New York State unemployment as a part of your wage contributions, if you actually rent payroll on yourself for yourself from your S corp, there is a chance that you may not be eligible. It's a gray area inside the code. They did not specifically address it, but most likely you will be eligible because you still paid in unemployment for all your other employees as a part of the entity as a whole. So at this point, I only rely on the information that's available to us as of today, March thirty-first. It's a gray area. You may or may not qualify, but I still urge you to apply. If you apply, as long as they process your application, you're good. Okay, so let's move on. For now, well, the student loan interest. If you, if you have any type of student loans that you were paying, all of the payments are deferred for at least six months. Any, by the way, one important thing to notice is that the refund, the rebate checks for twelve hundred dollars or twenty-four hundred dollars for couples and five hundred dollars for a child cannot be offset for any state, local, federal or student loan debt liabilities. Okay, so if you owe your student loans and you're not paying to your student loans, generally speaking, they can offset any refunds you get from federal or state governments whenever you file your tax returns. With this, this rebate check that will not be offset and you will still get it. Okay, so that's important provision. The child support payments, however, if you owe child support and you're delinquent, they will take it. As far as the latest I've heard, they will take it only for child support. So that's also important to know. The other thing, I don't think it's any of this is, oh, the retirement plans. If you are hurting, you have a retirement plan like a 401K plan that you could technically borrow against or withdraw money from that is generally subject to ten percent early withdrawal penalty if you're under fifty-nine and a half years old. Then under the new provisions, you could actually take out up to one hundred thousand dollars as a withdrawal from your 401K plan and do not incur any ten percent early withdrawal penalty, which is huge. You do not incur it and I think it's great and you could use it. Now with borrowing, the same thing typically you could borrow up to fifty thousand dollars against your, your value in your 401K plan and then we pay the loan back to you. It's not a taxable event. But under the CARES Act, you could borrow up to one hundred thousand dollars and we paid back or contribute back more than nineteen thousand dollars a year until you reach that threshold of whatever you borrowed over fifty thousand dollars. And for that, you'll have up to three years to do. And that's also another way for you to tap into your savings per se without incurring any additional tax liabilities unlike the withdrawals. If you withdraw, you will still be subject to federal, state and local income taxes on the amount of withdrawals, not ten percent early withdrawal penalty and it'll be considered income for 2020. So loans is obviously a much better option. Okay. Now, I think this would be it for the individual portion that I wanted to cover today. Most of the other questions and information will be relatable to, to the different programs for business owners. Right now, I'll answer some of the questions that I'll have in the queue. So if you want, put in your questions. I have one question here, so. All right, the payroll grants from New York, I'll cover it next. Okay. Okay. All right, so no questions. I don't see any questions in the queue regarding the individual tax portion about, unless I do. Okay. All right, so some of the questions are concerning from some of the business owners relating to, yes, I'm an owner of an S corp and then I, I'm paying myself as an employee of the same, of my business just to stay in compliance and yes, you're doing the right thing. Now what happens if my business closes? Do I stop my payroll? Do I not? What are my options? So here's my answer to this and based on everything that I read and believe me, I read a lot and got all the guidance from all the reputable sources like SBA.gov, IRS, the New York City, New York State publications. So here's the thing. If your business has suffered at least twenty-five percent or more in decrease in revenue and you cannot sustain your operations and need help and you're an employee of that same business and you have no other employees, then guess what? A, you may be eligible for unemployment benefits if you do stop payroll. B, you're actually eligible for more than one type of business related programs that are available by the SBA and by the, by the local New York State and New York City programs. So to answer your question regarding laying myself off if I'm the only employee, if you can't afford paying yourself because you don't have any income, then that's what you need to do. You have to stop payroll. You should still continue filing the payroll tax returns on quarterly basis even with zero payroll just to stay in compliance. But you should definitely apply for unemployment and you should definitely apply for one of the two or three actually programs that I'll go over next. But yes, you should stop payroll if you have no income covered in. Absolutely. If you had, now, on the other hand, if you have other employees besides yourself and you want to make sure that they're going to stick around with you once you reopen your doors, then you may consider keeping them on payroll and keeping yourself on payroll. And I'll explain to you why. Number one, so under the CARES Act, okay, they, they have proposed, actually, I'm going to share with you right now. I'm going to share you something that will be easy for you to follow, so. I hope everybody could see my screen. So as a part of the SBA federal relief, okay, CARES Act, there were two different types of programs before. So one of them was on the left side, on, on the right side, which was the EIDL. This is the essential economics, I mean, the EIDL program. What was the actual definition of it? That's what the, that's what the the abbreviation for the type of plans, the seven A. Now it does say seven B over here, but I just did it for the comparison. This is the old, this is the new, the proposed. So on the right side, if you could look at the right side, okay. Seven B, the federal small business relief EIDL package, okay, was great for business owners who have people on payroll and want to continue keeping them on payroll. But it's, the, the, the application process was very different than the one that we have under the new provisions under the PPP, which is a paycheck protection loan program that was just rolled in and as a part of the CARES Act on March twenty-seventh, twenty twenty. So just to compare it, you have to give a personal guarantee of any amount or loan application over two hundred thousand dollars. You had to be in business for at least a year. You had to have less than five hundred employees, but you had to, you had to provide a lot of documentation, your profit and loss statements for the three years, your tax returns for the three years, your personal financial statements, your expense reports. The, the credit had a huge discredit worthiness, meaning how's your personal credit? Played a huge impact on this. However, they did offer you the ten thousand dollars emergency grant that essentially would have been deducted under the new plan or standalone package. It's an emergency grant to keep you afloat while, while they process the application. Okay. Now, this was great when you needed a lot of equity, okay? And it's only offered through SBA. It's not offered by any other bank. And it's still great. It's a great product. This is, so if you go on SBA.gov right now, the only type of loan you could apply for is this one. Okay. This loan has two parts to it. You'll get an emergency relief grant of ten thousand dollars. Upon submission of the application, they claim that you'll get it within three days, which I don't think is going to be the case, but most likely you will. Then the actual process will take about three to four weeks because the case will be assigned for, the case will be assigned to the, the claims specialist that the SBA, they'll get in touch with you. They'll request a bunch of documentation from you and you'll have to submit it. And they, at the end, they could either approve you or deny you based on the actual economic loss that you had. Now, what does that mean? The ten thousand dollars emergency grant relief is yours to keep no matter what. But here is the kicker to it. It's on first come, first served, first come, first served basis. So to apply for it is crucial right now for anybody who wants some type of financing. And you'll get to keep it whether or not you are approved for the loan or not. So it's yours to keep no matter what. But they only allocated ten billion dollars towards this. So once they exhaust the ten billion dollars, it's gone. Okay. Now, under the new provisions, so let me back up. I know it's all unscripted. It's all, you know, all over the place, but I'm trying to keep it as clear as possible for everyone who's watching. So number one, you apply for this seven, for this EIDL program online. You could do it yourself or you could help either me or someone else do it for you. You apply for it. You get the ten thousand dollars. You get the phone call from the claims rep or an email. Once they get to your application, they could take weeks. After you speak to the claims rep, you could tell them that, look, I applied for this program, but guess what? The other program was not available. You can't apply for it yet. Okay, you cannot do it because they simply rolled it out. The banks don't have the, the application even for it. It's called seven A. This one was also called seven A, but it's a different relief type of package and easier qualifications. So when the representative calls you, you have to tell them, I want to apply for paycheck protection loan program, not EIDL. Why do, why, why am I recommending you to do this? Because as you could see, the loan forgiveness portion right here. Okay, the loan forgiveness is only available under this program and not the other one. What will that loan forgiveness portion consist of? So if you have employees, going back to that question, and you want to keep them on payroll and do not lay them off. And this is goes back to February fifteenth of this year, February fifteenth. So if you had employees and you kept them on up until the date of the application and you want to continue to take them, pay them for the time that they work for you or don't work for you, but you want to keep them on payroll and don't lose them as valuable employees, then guess what? All of the payroll associated costs, all of their payroll, all the payroll that you pay to yourself if you're an S corporation owner, all of the payroll that, payroll taxes that you have to pick up, the unemployment insurers, the workers comp, all of these costs, including your overhead expenses like rent, utility payments and interest on the mortgage if you have. All of it will be a part of the equation on how they determine the actual forgivable portion of the loan once you get it, which is right here. There are different type of expenses. So if you get a hundred thousand dollar loan and eighty, eighty thousand of it is used for, for keeping payroll, for paying the overhead and for paying the bills, guess what? Eighty thousand of it will be forgiven and it's, it's going to be considered as a grant. You do not have to repay it. Unlike in this program, none of it is forgiven. And you would have to repay the whole thing. Yes, they do cap the, the interest rate up to four percent. They cannot charge you more and they could extend the payments up to thirty years. But do you want a loan on your books or you want a grant that you don't have to repay? This, the new program is the one everybody needs to apply for. But one thing I want you to keep in mind, if you lay off your employees, you will not be able to deduct the payroll associated cost from the time that you, from the time that you will actually submit the application. Once again, I'll repeat that. If you will let go of your employees, you could only go back to February fifteenth to claim the credits for the forgivable portion under the paycheck protection loan program. It's very important for you to understand. If you keep them on, you could get it as a grant and don't repay it. Now, under the payment protection, the paycheck protection loan program, the, under the paycheck protection program, one second, please guys. Let me just start sharing for a second. One second, I have, okay, let me just stop video. Good. Sorry about that. So under the protection, payment protection program, the qualifications are much simpler. They don't look as much on your credit. You still have to have a decent credit. You cannot have a bankruptcy or anything like that. You've got to have had your business in operation starting with February fifteenth, twenty twenty. You did not have to be in business before. The processing is much simpler in terms of the paperwork. You just have to provide the fact that you need assistance to stay afloat. Unlike before, you needed to prove, provide your ability to repay the loan because of the risks involved. And there's no personal guarantee at all, no matter what the loan amount is. Unlike in the other program, EIDL, there is, you know, over two hundred thousand dollars. You have to personally guarantee the repayment of the loan. So the, the long terms, unlike the EIDL, they are capped at ten years and the interest rate cannot be more than four percent. You're also eligible for deferment for up to one year, just like in the other program. And you have to essentially demonstrate that you experienced financial hardship, loss of sales or revenue because of the pandemic that we have. So that's essentially it. Now, under the, if you only apply to paycheck protection loan program, you will not get the ten thousand dollar grant. So you have to apply for EIDL, get the grant and then ask the rep that contacts you in three, four weeks from now to apply for the payment protection loan program and not the EIDL. This is how you get around it. Once again, the process itself is not easy. It's simpler though, but it's not easy. And I would strongly encourage you to seek professional guidance from either tax practitioners that you trust and work with or someone that, that is in legal field like attorneys that essentially could also assist you with this. Also, I'll give you another warning. I personally have been getting a lot, tons of emails from different type of lending institutions that are essentially scams. A lot, it's phishing. People are phishing for your information. It's a phishing scam. They want to get it, they'll use it to enrich themselves. So I want you to be extra careful in terms of who you're working with and where do you apply because of that. Okay. Please be careful, be mindful. There's a lot of folks out there that, that will take advantage of this hard situation and they will take advantage to enrich themselves. So don't become a victim to all of those phishing scams. And instead, just contact and work with people you know and trust or somebody that came to you by the way of referrals. Okay. Now, what I just covered was essentially the federal situation, the federal loans and what the government is doing for all of the business owners and individuals. There's, there are also many, many programs on the local levels, okay? Which I technically, I do want to cover what's involved that's available from New York City and New York State to all the business owners as well. So before I go into the local type of programs, does anyone have any questions for me at this time? Please put in your questions inside the chat. Okay, so one of the questions was just wanted to confirm that with the paycheck protection plan that would cover me as an owner with a W two and not, not be affected by my part-time employee who is hourly, not being at work currently, current payroll is just me. This sounds like a better option, claiming unemployment. All right, so if it's just you and you don't have any part-time employees, yes. I think it is better off to try the unemployment route first. You can apply for unemployment and the loans at the same time. You can do it. The only thing that you cannot do is apply for different types of loans within the same organization because it will, the processing time will be much quicker and they may disallow both applications for essentially taking advantage of the situation and trying to apply everywhere. So I would not recommend you apply to different programs. You could convert different applications once you speak to the rep from the SBA or your banker, but not apply for different programs at the same time. Okay, as far as the unemployment, you could still apply for unemployment as a standalone. Anybody could do this. It's on a state level, not the federal. So you could do unemployment and the SBA route if you choose to. Now, another question. Somebody applied for unemployment benefits. She was denied the fact that she received severance package. So with the severance package, it works like this. The severance package covers a certain time or the back pay for certain weeks based on your years of employment. This, the severance package will exhaust probably. So if somebody worked for a firm for, for let's say, five years and it's one year, one week per year, you get paid for like five weeks as a severance. That five-week period would have to be demonstrated and explained to the unemployment, Department of Unemployment that it's only five weeks and you can reapply after five weeks are up. Because what they're saying is that, yes, you're unemployed, but you got a lump sum payment. You're no longer employed. You will not receive anything else after five weeks because you got your five-week pay in one shot. Now, this is only used as an example. If it's longer than five weeks, obviously you have to wait longer. You could still submit your unemployment claims after that five-week period and reapply. And I would strongly suggest that you do that to the participant that emailed me this question. Okay, another question. Am I applying for ten thousand grand? Does that come on automatically? So we should accept when, so we should accept then when contacted, say we want seven A? Yes, correct. So, good question. The ten thousand grant is once again on first come, first served basis. It's only ten billion dollars that's allocated for it. So whoever applies first gets it, no matter what, even if you deny the application or you reject the application after the loan is proposed to you. It's essentially emergency funding. So yes, when you are contacted by the SBA rep, you could tell them that, look, I applied for EIDL. I could not apply for the PPP, the, the payment protection plan because it was not available to be applied at that time. Please use my application for the PPP instead of the EIDL because I want it for that. And they will, as far as I know, based on the guidance that we get from the SBA, they will reapply to, to PPP program and not EIDL if you request them to do it. If you do nothing, you'll go in automatically for the EIDL only. That's why it is very important to speak to your trusted advisor, to your tax practitioner like myself and see if I could help you get through this on my end or even do this for you because I can. Speaking of that, the, the United States government and the SBA has approved and do recommend you using tax practitioners for a reason. We are considered to be essential services, especially in this time. So we could actually help all the business owners in need to get the loans approved and not just applied for but approved. And yes, there will be fees associated with it. They are capped in terms of what you could charge and they have to be disclosed as a part of the application. Now, why is it done? It's because when you, when you when you, if you apply for PPP, some of the portion that's used to pay your tax advisors to help you in the process could be included as a part of the forgivable portion if you get qualified for the PPP loan. So all your payroll overhead, it's going to be a part of the actual overhead. And that portion of the payment will be forgiven, which is important to notice. So you could pay something upfront, but you'll get it back, and you don't have to pay it off to the, to the banks or the SBA. All right, any more questions on this? So I could tell you briefly about New York State and New York City programs. I don't see anything now. All right, so let's move on. We're doing good. Okay, so, Employee Retention Grant Program is actually by New York City in conjunction with New York State. And I'll read it to you, because this is something new. It says of 3/30, which was yesterday. So to help small businesses deal with the impact of COVID-19, the city has launched the Employee Retention Grant Program to help retain employees as businesses face decreased revenue. So once again, it's an employer retention. This program is available to New York City businesses with one to four employees that can demonstrate at least 25% decrease in revenue as a result of the pandemic. Eligible businesses will receive a grant covering up to 40% of their payroll costs for two months. And businesses can access up to 27,000 of that grant. So who can apply? Businesses, including all the nonprofits, must be located within the five boroughs of New York City, demonstrate the outbreak, that the outbreak of COVID-19 has caused at least 25% decrease in revenue, employ one to four employees in total across all locations, this includes the owners who are on payroll, having an operation for at least six months, and have no outstanding tax liens or legal judgments. Okay? So that's huge, and we could apply for it separately. That's up to $27,000 of grants. The application is actually processed kind of stringent, but it can be done, it's easy, $27,000. Now, on the state level, let me see this state, hold on a sec. Well, I'm going to show you something else. I will show you something else. So I've been working hard once again and compiling all this stuff and all the information, so. Federal has all, I hope you could all see my screen. So federal programs, I have all the information for in terms of what you could be eligible for, based on what criteria and everything else listed, where and how. Now, each state, as you could see here, let's go to New York. New York. So New York City, we have this, what I just told you, up to $75,000, but $27,000 is essentially the grant, 40% of it could be forgiven, the rest is a loan. New York State, that's the insurance. All right, so they do have a link to where you could go, it's similar to New York City. It is offering, it's a disaster loan, so if you, if you suffer an economic loss in New York State and New York City, you could apply for both, I would encourage you to apply everywhere you can to get as much financing as possible, but New York State, unlike New York City, will not forgive or redeem a portion of the loan as a part of, well, will forgive it essentially, like, like New York City will do, if you use it for payroll to sustain your business operations, and their application process is more difficult than New York City's, but it's still there, and I think it's worth mentioning it. Now, each state has a different program. In addition to what the feds are offering, I keep track of it, as you could see, I've been busy doing all of this. There are also some private resources, so we have different banks and what they'll be doing. Also, not just banks, but different vendors, different businesses like Amazon, Facebook, they're offering different types of incentives for business owners, even in free ad spends, like Facebook is giving away $3,000 of free ad spend, Google is doing, I think, $4,000 in free ad spend on Google pay-per-clicks. Once again, you have to demonstrate, all of them require you to demonstrate financial hardship and loss of revenue, and the continuation of business affairs. So if you close down your doors, you most likely will not qualify with all of those private type of foundations that are set up and grants that are given by different businesses, but right now, the main focus should be is to apply for anything you can on a federal level, local and state, and obviously handle it in the way that will benefit you and benefit your business, benefit your employees. And if a big portion of it could be actually used as a grant and will not be required to be repaid, obviously, it should be a number one priority, demonstrate that and work your, work itself out downwards. Meaning, you start with a grant, and then you go with a loan, and then the type of loan, what's the financing terms, et cetera, what can you use it for? Are there any personal guarantees? Because let's be realistic. If you own a business and you still, and you, you're obviously suffering, right, this is how you demonstrate the need for the financing or loans, you need to make sure that you can sustain your business affairs. Now, what happens if you cannot continue your operations after you got the financing? And you have to shut down your doors, you have to liquidate your business affairs? Good question, right? So what happens to that loan? Under the EIDL program that's only available right now, not the PPP program, and I do use abbreviations because there's just too many words and it's easier to remember, under the old program, if you borrow more than $200,000, you're personally liable for the entire loan. Under it, you're not. Under the new program, the PPP, guess what? There's no personal guarantee. If you're, if you're forced to shut down your business and completely dissolve everything, you will not be liable for the loan. Okay? You will not be liable for the loan, obviously, this opens up another opportunities for people that want to cut the corner or beat the system, which is unethical, and obviously, I will not work with anybody like that at all. But there is anticipation that a lot of people will do exactly that, and I don't want you to be that person because it's not right. People need money, there is a reason why the government has released this CARES Act with over $2.2 trillion of funding for businesses and individuals. But keep in mind, you all have to repay back. It's not free money. Eventually, it's going to be, the taxes most likely will go up, and all the taxpayers will repay that money. There's no free lunch on Wall Street, that's the saying, there ain't no free lunch. So right now, if you could get something that is quote-unquote free, like grants, I strongly urge you to look for professionals that will help you get it. And again, the financing, you need to stay afloat as long as you can, so we could go past this pandemic and continue our business affairs and simply continue on with our lives. I have a question coming in here, let's see. All right, it's just a bunch of emojis, which is great. All right, guys, I think that's it for now. I will continue to keep you posted on everything that's happening. I don't want to keep you longer than I have to, I think I covered all the things that needed to be covered. And you heard it directly from me, I got all my information from all the reputable, reliable sources, all the other stuff that you hear and foresee on social media that does not coincide to what I said is incorrect. Okay, I want you to remember that we will get through it. It's an obstacle that all of us have to overcome, we have to remain strong, we have to remain together, we have to remain positive. Okay? And with that, I think I'll end my presentation unless somebody else has additional questions for me. But other than that, I will, oh, by the way, if you need to get in touch with me and you're not my client, please call our office, 718-577-2582. I will do whatever it takes to help you on my end because, listen, the slogan of my firm is, to us, your financial freedom matters. But I think I'll expand on this and say, it's not just your financial freedom, it's you guys. I mean, we, we're all suffering, and we want to make sure that we'll get through this together. That's pretty much it. This was your favorite tax time guy, Alexi Kaplan CPA, I will continue to keep you afloat on all the new developments and anything I come across. Everybody's stressed out, I get it, I'm stressed out too. But we have to remain positive together and healthy and safe. Please stay home, do not go out unless you really need to. And contact our office at 718-577-2582, so we could discuss how we could help you get better financially and get back on your feet if you're hurting. Thank you so much, have a nice day. Bye-bye, everybody.